Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening, Tuesday, June 9, 2020, for our Orange County School Board regular meeting. We are going to begin, because we are not all present in the chambers, we have a couple of members that are participating virtually. We're going to begin by taking a roll call. Let me start with Member Gallo. Good afternoon, Member Lopez.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Member Cobert.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Gould. Did I hear Vice Chair Gould? All right. We'll come back to her in a minute. Dr. Gordon.
Here, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Kester-Dentl.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Byrd.
Hi, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me try one more time. Vice Chair Gould, are you on the line? All right. I'm sure that Vice Chair Gould will be joining us shortly. Due to Phase 2 of the Governor's Plan, we're now able to gather in groups of 50 people or less. So tonight, we have several of us that are in the room, along with several members of staff, and the public is also welcome to join us, as long as we limit our numbers inside the chambers. Let us begin this meeting, as we begin every meeting, with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and Member Lopez is going to lead us in both. We wanted to make sure that the public is aware of how we are adapting to this new environment and how we are accommodating social distancing. You will see that we have spaced the board members six feet apart throughout the room, and we have limited the number of guests in our room to 50 people. Masks are highly encouraged, though for us here on the board who are needing to speak clearly into the speakers, we're not using them at this time, but we do use them generally when we are inside the building. And everyone who is in the room has been asked to... Let me check. Let me interrupt just a minute. Do we have Vice Chair Gould with us?
Yes, my apologies.
Not a problem. Just wanted to make sure we confirmed your attendance. Thank you. Everyone who is in the room has answered two simple health questions and has had their temperature checked before they were allowed inside. Please note that at this time, we are not shaking hands, and we have hand sanitizer provided throughout the room. So thank you so much for helping us keep you and the public safe if you're joining us. Also, for overflow purposes, if we meet the limit of 50 people in the room, the lobby is open for seating, where guests can view the board meetings on the monitors in the lobby while social distancing. Thank you again for participating in tonight's meeting, if you're calling in by phone or if you're here in person. Let me check with Dr. Jenkins at this time and see if we have newly appointed administrators to recognize. I believe we do.
We do, Madam Chair. Members of the board, and they understand they're probably listening in, but they will not be speaking until such time that we have an opportunity to bring them into the boardroom. Thomas Ott Jr. was principal at Osceola Tech College in Kissimmee. He will be the new principal at University High School. Lisa Jean Karsinski was acting senior administrator for the high school office. She will be the new principal at Ocoy High School. Cicely Marks was assistant principal at Killarney Elementary. She will be the new principal at Oak Hill Elementary. Rebecca Ann McDade was assistant principal at Weingard. She will be the new principal at Clay Springs Elementary. Frederick Ray was assistant principal at Carver Middle. He will be the new principal at Piedmont Lakes Middle School. Robert Lee Walker was acting principal at Citrus Elementary. He will be now the principal of Citrus Elementary. And Mark Rakowski was acting principal at Killarney. He will now take the helm as principal at Killarney Elementary School.
I think applause is still in order. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. We welcome the opportunity to congratulate them and thank them in person. Dr. Jenkins, before we proceed, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is one change. That is Item 802, request approval of Friday, July 31, 2020, to be added as pre-planning day to the Orange County Public Schools 2020-2021 calendar is being moved, at the request of Member Kester-Dentl, to non-consent Item 1701 for discussion.
Thank you. The Chair finds cause to amend the agenda, as requested by the superintendent. Is there a motion to amend the agenda? Motion by Member Cobert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Byrd. Let me go through roll call, and again, this is to amend, not to adopt, the agenda. Member Gallo.
Yes.
Member Lopez.
Aye.
Member Cobert.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould.
Aye.
Dr. Gordon.
Aye.
Dr. Kester-Dentl.
Aye.
And Member Byrd.
Aye.
And I likewise vote in the affirmative, so that motion carries unanimously. Before we take action on the consent agenda, let me ask if we have any callers requesting to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two callers, and they want to speak about Item 8.02, which has just been moved to 17.01.
Okay.
Your consent agenda does not have any callers.
Okay, so we are going to hold that for those comments for just a minute, because that item is no longer on the consent agenda. And with no callers to recognize, no public comment to take on the consent agenda, let me ask if there is a motion to adopt or approve the consent agenda. Motion by Member Lopez. Second by Member Cobert. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as adopted? Please sit up. Sorry. Let me do roll call. Member Gallo.
Aye.
Member Lopez.
Aye.
Member Cobert.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould.
Aye.
Dr. Gordon.
Aye.
Dr. Kester-Dentl.
Aye.
Member Byrd.
Aye.
And I likewise vote in the affirmative. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. I fear we're getting too good at this. I can't wait till we go back to our normal way of doing business, but we're easing into it. So with that, let's move on to, I should make a couple of comments about our public comment period before we take some public comment. In order to provide governmental transparency, as well as reasonable opportunities for the public to access and participate in the decision-making process, new protocols were established to comply with the various emergency executive and administrative orders entered by the federal, state, and local government entities, including but not limited to the Governor's Executive Order and the emergency executive orders issued by the Mayor of Orange County. The protocols are designed to allow the school board to continue to perform essential functions in a manner consistent with law and board policy while keeping our citizens and our community and employees safe. The opportunity for public to participate in this meeting, to provide public comment on the published agenda, have been posted on our website and Board Docs and are as follows. Public comment being made by email. Members of the public were invited to provide public comment via email for the school board's consideration at this school board meeting by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, that was yesterday, June 8. Any emails that were received by that time were compiled by OCPS staff and provided to each school board member electronically or in hard copy for consideration by 10:00 this morning. Emails received will become part of the permanent record attached to this meeting. If I can just poll each school board member to confirm that everybody did, in fact, receive those comments by email, let me begin with Member Gallo.
Yes.
Member Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Cobert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gould.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon.
Yes.
Dr. Kester-Dentl.
Yes.
Member Byrd.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Karen Kester-Dentl has left the meeting.
Well. She'll be back. I do want to thank our staff who compiles the emails and presents them to the board in a very efficient fashion, that makes sure that we have time to read those emails before we're here tonight. Public comment received telephonically. For those members of the public who wish to address the school board during the public comment portion of the meeting to speak to a published agenda item, the telephone line number for such participation is 407-250-6270. Callers were entered into the queue between 5:15 and 5:30. The public is reminded that all comments made telephonically will be subject to board policies regarding civility and length of communication, up to three minutes. The time limit for public comment that has already been established, that comment period has already been established in the past by school board policy. And then finally, comment in person. We are back to having public comments in person. For those members who have chosen to attend in person, there are none with us right now, but in our pre-agenda meeting, where we take public comments on subjects that are not on the agenda, we did have our first in-person speaker since we were self-isolated. I want to say self-quarantine, but since we have ceased meeting in these chambers. For those who wish to attend in person, you'll fill out a public comment card located in the lobby outside and turn it into our general counsel. So before we take up our next item, or actually, let me move to our next item. Dr. Jenkins, and if we can go to 1702 on our agenda, and I'll call on you first, Dr. Jenkins, and then I'll go to Member Kester-Dentl, who has pulled this item for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of bits of information that would be helpful for our discussion, and I'm certain most of you had already looked at the information provided to you. And it's helpful to remember as well that so much of this transpired before COVID-19, at which point all of our lives changed. So back in July of 2018, the board approved the calendar for the approaching school year, as we always try to approve calendars about two years out, so that families and community can make their plans. So July 31, 2018, is when the original calendar for the approaching school year was approved. During our collective bargaining process, President Wendy Dormel and her team actually surveyed membership and teachers to query whether or not they were interested in an additional pre-planning day, a sixth pre-planning day rather than five days, as had been the case. Overwhelmingly, their response, according to President Dormel, was that teachers did want that additional day for pre-planning. And so a TA was agreed upon for the additional day of pre-planning. Fast forward, it occurs that we need to actually add that date to the approaching calendar, which was approved back in 2018, prior to COVID-19. And no one foresaw the additional complications and the questions around whether or not schools will reopen in person or reopen late. None of that was considered at the time of the TA. And so what was agreed upon, the union, while certainly they would have preferred not to have a Friday, conceded that that August 10 date virtually gave little other choices to the setting of the additional pre-planning day. August 10, by the way, is set in statute that we cannot start school any earlier than August 10, so that's an important date to mark. And so while they had those discussions, and I want to add that there is no requirement that we have an official MOU, because the calendar is not officially negotiated with the union, but their input is critical, and we want that agreement. And so rather than wrangling over, do you try to undo and redo a calendar, they moved toward the next two calendars, which are also on the agenda. They were on your consent agenda. In those instances, in order not to have teachers come on a Friday before the start of pre-planning, but also keeping in line with the statutory requirements not to start school before August 10, they strategically did place those dates so that we go from Monday to Monday for pre-planning next year, and in the following year, in '22, '23, we will go from Tuesday to Tuesday. In both instances, pushing back the start of school so that the August 10 date is met, as well as not having teachers come on a Friday. Had some conversation with Member Kester-Dentl and other board members as well. The intention is good, and I spoke with Wendy Dormel, our president. The intention is good. They did a positive thing for teachers, to add an additional payday of pre-planning. The unintended consequence is you have nowhere to go with it to land, other than that Friday before, unless you, I suppose you could try to go even further out and then have a gap during pre-planning. So the fix is in place for the next two years. The fix was problematic for the approaching year, in which we had already published a calendar to our community, to our parents, a year ago. And so I think it's timely to at least have the discussion, and honestly, depending on what comes down from Tallahassee, it may be a moot point if there is some change in the start of school year anyway. And so that background, I think, is helpful to all of our teachers. I want to thank President Dormel for trying to make sure folks understood why that date was selected. But to all of our teachers, we certainly want to make accommodations if folks have plans or concerns about that additional day for this coming year. We can certainly try to look at some solutions and have that discussion as well. With that, Madam Chair, members of the board, happy to answer any questions or listen to Member Kester-Dentl's comments.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I'm going to recognize Member Kester-Dentl in one second. I just want, for the benefit of the public who might be listening and is not familiar with all of our acronyms, for you to, you talked about the TA with the union.
So TA is a tentative agreement. When we had a discussion at the bargaining table for the additional sixth day of pre-planning, TA was reached. That means an agreement was reached and signed off on. And then later on, by ballot, when teachers ratified the entire agreement, that was one of the additional provisions in the CTA contract ratified by our teachers.
Thank you. Now let me turn to Member Kester-Dentl. Member Kester-Dentl, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for the background information. I know that the teachers and the district negotiated for six days of pre-planning for this upcoming school year. So not starting or not having that first of the six days added on July 31 is not really an option. We still need those six days of pre-planning. And I understand that the calendar was previously set, but if we're able to have that flexibility when the state comes in and possibly changes our start date, we don't know, I wonder if we could still use that same flexibility to make adjustments to the calendar in this instance. I know if we were to push that first day of pre-planning to the Monday, August 3, so that the first day of school for the students is August 11, we are not violating that first start day of August 10 that the state set. And I was looking at the calendar, wondering what the whole domino effect would be if we were to start the children coming back on the 11th versus the 10th. And it looks like everything else would stay, could stay in place, whether it's Thanksgiving break or the professional day in October. And it could easily be amended at the end of the school year, where instead of ending on a Tuesday, the students could end on a Wednesday, allowing Thursday and Friday for post-planning, and that still allows for teachers and students and everyone to finish before the Memorial Day weekend. So I understand that we don't want to play around with too much or tinker too much with a calendar that is already set. But I think in this instance, since the six days of pre-planning were negotiated after the calendar was set, that there is room for some flexibility. And I just wanted to know, maybe what some of my other board members think about that.
Nobody is chomping at the bit to respond, so, oh, now I take it back. Member Gallo, go ahead. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I don't know, I tried to text you. I wasn't quick enough. I was, I'm supposed to be texting Dr. Jenkins when I need to be queued in, but I'm not that fast of a typer. I agree with Member Kester-Dentl, Dr. Kester-Dentl, if there's anything that we could do to be flexible within those dates, I know that the teachers would appreciate it. If it's just a minor movement, I don't know logistically if we have to renotice it. I'm not certain about what the rules are behind the calendar, or even if we could be flexible in offering virtual days during that day. I do believe, I'm not very confident that we're going to start on August 10, given the times that we're in right now. So I do believe that it'll probably be moved back. So I would be in agreement in being as flexible as we possibly can with our teachers, and if there's something we could possibly do, just for this year to work it out, I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, I guess I have, I just have some catching up to do here in terms of understanding how much authority we have. So when the state governors, FDOE, whoever it is who sets the start date originally at August 10, are we mandated to start on that date?
No sooner than August 10.
No sooner than August 10. Okay. So had we known ahead of time that we were looking at this pre-planning date, we might have started on August 11. But now we've advertised the calendar, everybody is relying on the calendar, it's formally adopted. So if he does, if there is a delayed date, then we would have the ability to start a day later? Oh, I would be fully in support of that, if we have that authority.
So I don't want to misspeak. The legislative statutory requirement of no earlier than August 10 has been in place for more, she's checking the date, it's been in place for more than this past year. So when we put in place that in 2018, approved that calendar, it was because we knew we could not start any earlier than August 10. And of course, you want to be out before the holiday, if you can. And so the date of the legislation was?
2018.
2018. So that dictated what we put in place. And then fast forward, December of 2019, we were still pre-COVID, is when we talked about that sixth day, and nobody foresaw that there would be these kind of concerns. So I think two things are potentials. I would recommend, just in case, if August 10 comes down from the state, that nothing has changed about that, and they would like for us to start as normal, I don't want our teachers not to have that additional day available to them to be paid for the additional day of pre-planning, because they bargained that. So it needs to be available to our teachers. I think there are a couple of solutions we can have in place. One is an understanding that we'll have that conversation again, and the board will look at revamping the calendar in its entirety if that kind of direction comes down from the state. Because I don't want anyone to think we would be wed to this if the state gives us different direction. I think it's also fair that there may be some families, whatever you do, someone may be unhappy. There may be some families that say, you published this way out, and we were planning on taking off the next day, and now you've pushed this back, and now you've done something different. Somebody may be unhappy. It's why we try to publish two years out. That's what you've approved tonight, is the next two years of calendar. Doesn't mean it's in indelible ink, though, so the board can certainly come back and revisit all of that. I would recommend, because we don't know what's going to come down from Tallahassee, that we make this provision. We are happy to go back, had this conversation, our chief negotiator had this conversation as well. It may be that you say to teachers, if that Friday is problematic to you, and the state still pushes for the August 10 start date, which is, may be unlikely, then not only can you decide that you don't want to work on that day, but you don't have to burn one of your personal leave days in order to meet that requirement. So no harm, no file, you don't come, there's no payment, there's no penalty, you don't burn one of your days. So there are a couple of ways we can get around it. What I worry about is if nothing else transpires, the board has to approve this additional day so teachers can be paid for that sixth day of pre-planning. So I would recommend, happy to hear other suggestions as well, I would recommend that we approve it with the understanding, we can certainly have potentially a motion that says, with the understanding, we will revisit it based on the state's guidelines, and that we will make a provisions with our union, that teachers will not be penalized if they decide not to work that day.
Dr. Jenkins, that sounds like a perfect option. And just for clarification for anybody watching, that only pertains to if August 10 remains the start date. If August 10 doesn't remain the start date, then we will need to revisit this whole discussion. And I would support personally, as we revisit the discussion, to try not to have that additional day be on a Friday. But I think we have to also understand the implications of everything else. So let me ask, let me, in deference to Member Kester-Dentl, who pulled this item and raised this, Member Kester-Dentl, I don't know what your feeling is, but do you want to offer a motion at this time?
Yes, but I have one more question, if I may, to that one day that we're looking at. And this is really, I guess, to Superintendent Jacob. If that day stays in place while we wait for the direction from the state, and it does look like an optional day, I wonder also if we could allow teachers the flexibility of having that day a virtual day, where they don't necessarily have to report to the building, but maybe they could do a work from home on that day and also be compensated?
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Kester-Dentl, that certainly is a possibility. I don't want to override the collective bargaining process, but we would have no problem with discussions around that possibility on this end, but we wouldn't want to unilaterally announce that at this point.
So, Member Kester-Dentl, we, go ahead.
I would say, then how would we move forward with these things up in the air if we were to make a motion right now?
We would take it back to the bargaining table. That's CTA's right to have some say in any change we make in that sixth day. I don't think they'll have, I don't think they'll have any problem, but I don't want to presume we have unilateral authority over something that was bargained.
Right.
So, Member Kester-Dentl, go ahead. I think your question is, could you add to that motion, the language about teachers opting to use their pre-planning day virtually? Is that correct?
Yes, and that could be taken back to the teachers and bring it back, I guess, at our next meeting.
I don't know when their next bargaining session is. We'll get it back to you as soon as possible. And I have to say, I've spoken with President Dormel today. I don't suspect there'll be any issue with it. I just don't have authority to unilaterally say that. And I will find out when their next bargaining session is. I think if you approve it tonight with that caveat, then there won't be a problem moving forward.
So, Member Kester-Dentl, it sounds like the way a motion could be made would be that the board would be agreeable to these two changes. We do have two callers on the line, and we can take those callers after we have a motion or a second. Generally, we take them before we have a motion. So do you want to sit quietly for a minute? We'll hear from them. All right. Thank you, and I'll come back to you. Our callers, Ms. Henble.
We're ready for our first caller.
Doctor is correct. Do we have our first caller on the line?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, it's Wendy Dormel.
Welcome, Ms. Dormel. You could give your name and address for the record, just for the record, of course, and then you'll have three minutes for your comments. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Wendy Dormel, Orange County Classroom Teachers Association, 1020 Webster Avenue. And I want to thank you all. Good evening. And thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for your accurate background in summary, concern in calendars, and also Dr. Kester-Dentl and Mrs. Gallo for your comments. And it's been a real concern of teachers. We didn't expect this to happen, and we do know that the calendar was set in 2018. CTA really pushed not to have that Friday be the first day to pre-planning. And teachers told us they didn't want the Friday to be a first day of pre-planning. So it's really encouraging to hear you thinking of moving it to Monday, which is a possibility, and also of allowing teachers to have that first day for this year as a virtual day. And I think they'd be pleased with that. It would really mess up some teachers' vacation time, and it would mean a lot to them if we could get this fixed now. Even if Tallahassee is making a change, just to know that if they don't make a change, that this is set for them would mean a lot to them. So that's all I have to say. Thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Dormel. Our next caller.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry. Can you give your name and address?
Thank you, yes. Matthew Hazel, 10108 Matchlock Drive. I am also a member of...
I'm sorry. Can you give your name and address?
Thank you, yes. Matthew, yes. Matthew Hazel, 10108 Matchlock Drive. I am also a member of CTA and on the bargaining team, and I was there when this was discussed. So I also thank Dr. Jenkins for providing her background. I will say that CTA did propose what members Castor Dental and Gallo are proposing, having schools start on Tuesday, August 11th, and adding a day at the end, Wednesday, May 26th, as a student's day, and the 27th and 28th as post-planning days. We were told by the district that because the calendar had already been set, those changes could not be made. So CTA was in favor of that. We were told explicitly that that could not be done. So to hear you discuss it now is interesting, and of course, I personally would still support it. I join President Dormel in also supporting the idea of making the 31st a virtual day or optional day for teachers for this year. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. I do want to be clear, I think there may be some misunderstanding, and before we have a motion on the table to consider, Dr. Jenkins, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this because my understanding is different than Mr. Hazel's understanding. My understanding is that the date of August 10th is the date we've advertised to all of our parents, to teachers and to everybody as the start of school, the official start of school. And that if there is an emergency order that requires us to push the start of school date back to a different date, that that calendar is obviously no longer binding and everybody will understand why we're changing it. Hence, we may revisit and have the planning, pre-planning day be on a Monday. Absent a change, the start of school will still be August 10th. And there is no discussion taking place here as a part of this motion about changing that date. The discussion is that instead of teachers having to come in for their pre-planning, they can opt to forego that pre-planning day. They will not be docked any vacation time or anything else. That's just, they will obviously not be paid for a pre-planning day if they choose not to take advantage of that. Or as an addendum to that, that Dr. Castor Dental has suggested, that they could utilize that pre-planning day virtually. That those two options, if the board votes in favor of this, would be options that we would be willing to take back to the union with the start of school date still being August 10th. So, Mr. Hazel, I just wanted to clarify that. So what you were told is consistent with what we're doing. I'm not sure if the union asked if that could be an optional day. I'm not sure if they asked if that could be a virtual day. I doubt it because I think at the time this was all taking place, the idea of virtual wasn't on anybody's radar screen. So that's where we are today, and it is very important that there be trust and clear communication in the bargaining process. And I am sure all board members receive the same communication I do, and I often worry that there is a lack of, of clear understanding of what's taking place in those meetings. So again, Mr. Hazel, I just wanted to clarify that. This board is very agreeable to trying to make accommodations so that teachers do not have to come in on that Friday. But, but we do not feel that we should be changing the calendar that we've advertised to parents unless there's an emergency situation that requires that. Now, back to you, member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, Madam Chair, you are always so good at summarizing the points. You help me clarify my thinking, my thinking. So thank you for that. So if I can, is it, is it time to make a motion?
It absolutely is, and I'm assuming you would prefer to make that, and you certainly have.
If I may, then?
Of course.
In order for us to, okay, in order for us to maintain the calendar as set and to honor the agreement that the teachers previously bargained, I would like to make a motion that that first day of pre-planning of July 31st, teachers have the flexibility of coming into the school building or attending virtually or option, opting to not work that day and then not get paid for that day.
Well, Dr. Jenkins, do you want to modify that tail end?
I would, I just want to make sure that the board is approving that July 31st day.
Cat Gordon has left the meeting.
We're having trouble hearing the superintendent.
Okay, for some reason, I'm not sure that your mic is picking up. It was earlier.
I am so sorry.
There we go.
That turned it off, turned it off.
Okay, um, Dr. Board, or Dr. Jenkins, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. So all I would ask is that member Castor Dental's motion include the approval of that July 31st date so we don't have any issue with paying teachers for the sixth day of planning, and then also the provision being taken back to collective bargaining to either make it an opt-in, opt-out day or a virtual day, depending on collective bargaining.
Is that your motion, member Castor Dental?
Yes, I would like to, yes, thank you. I would like to include that language as well.
Awesome.
I would like to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion from member Castor Dental, a second from member Cobert, and I think we have Dr. Gordon, I heard Dr. Gordon's voice, I think she may want to be recognized. Dr. Gordon? No? Okay. I just, I heard her voice come through. Any members of the board wish to be recognized? And we took both of our callers? Yes, we took both of our callers. Let me do a roll call vote on this. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Member Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon? Dr. Castor Dental?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon? I likewise vote in the affirmative. I'm going to try one more time because I know occasionally we have some technological malfunctions and could be a storm or other cause. Dr. Gordon? All right, at this point, we have a motion, a second, and we have all members, but Dr. Gordon voting in the affirmative. Dr. Gordon is absent for this vote. Let me move on then. Ms. Enval, are we, we good on the minutes? Okay, thank you. Let me call on Dr. Jenkins for informational items. You and that mic tonight, whoa.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
All right, so just a couple of things I would love to share. Number one, congratulations to board member Byrd because she has been recognized by the Florida School Boards Association to be our newest certified board member. She joins Dr. Gordon and member Cobert, I believe. To earn that distinction, you have to complete 96 hours of training in three different content areas, boardmanship, school finance, policy governance, bargaining personnel, curriculum and instruction, state and federal legislative processes, and school law. To quote the CEO, "I am proud to recognize Melissa as a certified board member." That's from FSBA Director of Leadership Services, Tina Pinkinson. So congratulations to member Byrd. Secondly, want to reassure our community again regarding what will happen next year. And I know we keep saying it, but I want to reassure, because if I were a parent trying to make plans for next year, I would have, I would have great anxiety as well. So as soon as we get information, we were told a week ago, we might be hearing from the commissioner, and then we were told last week we'd be hearing, we are still waiting for some direction. I think it would be inappropriate for us to just barrel forward with our own plans when we are told there will be some direction from the Department of Education. Wanted to assure folks of that. We will keep you posted as soon as we hear anything. We can all hedge our bets and with individual board members, we try to make predictions on what's going to turn out, what's going to come down, but the simple truth is, we don't know yet. And so in the meantime, I want to thank those who have been sharing with us their ideas around reopening. I want to be very clear, there is no task force, as someone mentioned earlier, what we have in place are staff members, employees who are in working groups around re-entry. And so they, one is for workforce, one is for health and safety, one is for academics and instruction, and one is around operations. And essentially, when we did our survey, we sort of made clear, there are probably three different directions we can go in, tentatively, no, no indication, either face-to-face in the fall, or a virtual, or a blended model where both are put in place. So we asked for these re-entry work groups to really work at compiling and researching and fact-finding and then consolidating information, ideas around school reopening. There are international examples, there are some throughout the country, there are some in Florida that are trying to make their way. We've simply asked this group to consolidate, fact-find, and consolidate for me what those reopening options, ideas might look like. More importantly, we wanted every teacher, every employee, every parent, every community member to have an opportunity to submit their ideas. And so the virtual think tank was opened a week and a half ago, and to date, we have 4,253 submissions. Want to be very clear, that think tank is, we want to hear your ideas so that we can include them in our consolidation. It is not a vote or a survey. It is actually to consolidate and capture all of our ideas. And so they've been working on that. What our public relations office is doing is scanning those actual ideas and then dividing them out to the four working groups so that they can hash through and try to consolidate in some usable format all of the ideas that are coming through to us. Why we call it a think tank, they are looking at ideas and helping to consolidate those for our use. Again, 4,253 so far. We believe these working groups can help us crunch that information into usable format. That is the role that they have before them. We've asked that they try to come to some consolidation by the end of the month. I well understand if something comes out from Tallahassee, it could certainly change our efforts and our, and our plans, but they are moving forward with those thousands of ideas and then some. Wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that. Avoid the term task force. They are working groups and they are made up of our employees. Union gave us six in particular. We have four additional teachers, we have some administrators, we have four representatives from OESPA, just to make sure we have a good mixture around those think tank ideas. We will keep you posted as the consolidation efforts continue. And then lastly, I wanted to mention, someone also mentioned this, and I so appreciated the chair reminding our public that we are so committed to the safety of our children, that kind of protection has to be foremost in our minds. We cannot let go of what happened at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. We have to certainly be mindful of protecting our children. That being said, we are certainly also concerned with all that is going on in our nation and here locally around the horrible act of violence that took place not so long ago. I wrote, I won't read it here, but I wrote a, an actual response and shared it on social media, and then we sent it out to all of our employees as well. It's on our website. Suffice it to say, it was a sad day in this country, but I am hopeful that just in the days of civil rights movements, that the conscience, the heart of our nation has been pricked and that something will actually take place and something will change. I also like to remind folks, I would not be drawn into debates over the virtue of the individual George Floyd who was killed because I think whatever those issues are, they, they could not equate, they could not equate to losing his life in the manner that he did. And so every mother's heart had to break for an adult child who in his last breath is calling out for his mother. There has to be some mechanism of change. And I think in the school systems, we can work on two avenues. One, we can work to make sure that our schools are bastions of safety and acceptance for all of our children, that they not only recognize diversity, but they celebrate it, and that our children are given such a high-quality education that they have bright futures before them so that they don't have to end up making poor choices. And then I think we also teach our young people around how you appropriately protest. Some members on the board, as well as myself, have had family members engaged in that. How do you appropriately peacefully protest so that you don't get yourself into some additional trouble? I think we can raise up a generation that has a different attitude around race, that has a different attitude around diversity and equity and acceptance, and an understanding that peaceful protests do make a difference in our country. And so I'm extremely hopeful that we will go beyond the protest to actual change in our country and certainly in our communities. And I, and as the chair mentioned, I am happy to talk with leaders of our law enforcement. I don't want to pretend that we are not in need of their services to protect our children. We are in need of services and law enforcement to keep our schools safe, and that has to remain in the forefront. We have to have a balanced approach, but happy to have those conversations and other conversations taking place in our community as well. I will end it by saying, as Martin Luther King did, I have this book called Brothers' Keeper, and I was torn between two quotes, so I'll just read them both. Nelson Mandela said, "The broad meaning of an African proverb is that each person's humanity is ideally expressed through his or her relationship with others, and there is in turn through a recognition of that person's humanity." And Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "We are inevitably our brother's keeper because we are our brother's brother. Whatever affects one direct," I'm sorry, "whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question with the SROs, with the law enforcement. Where can I see the guidelines to hire the SROs on for our schools?
Dr. Jenkins?
So I don't think you'll see guidelines on hiring. We actually have contract with our law enforcement agencies, so each individual municipality that serves our schools and Orange County Sheriff's Department, we have agreements. We can certainly make that. In fact, all of our agreements can be accessed online. We'll point you to that, but it's an agreement with law enforcement agencies. So we don't hire individuals, we contract with law enforcement for those SROs.
So we can see the requisite to be part of our schools?
You can see the contract that we, you can see the contract we have in place.
Okay. So as a school board members, can we request or provide recommendations for our SROs on trainings on how to deal with students from the ESE department, or maybe to include certain recommendations, like maybe we do not want any SROs with any type of feedback of violence or racist behavior in previous work or complaints, you know, racist complaints? Because, you know, when we think about the situation with George, for example, we, when we read the articles, we see that that specific person has more than 18 cases before he commit that criminal behavior. So I'm concerned about that as well.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Jenkins?
So absolutely, so absolutely, we can provide information. Our SROs and law enforcement teams do have training. We can provide that for the board as well. There is training provided. And then potentially, I'm going to assume that would be language that we would ask legal to look at adding to our SRO contracts. Happy to look at that as well.
Thank you. Member Lopez, I believe, because I had actually reached out to get some clarification on information that I heard about the CIT training, the crisis intervention training, and whether or not all of our, our police force as well as the SROs have had that training. There was, I believe all the SROs, I believe, and I think we should confirm this, have received that training. And I, and I think there was, again, a lack of availability, but I hope by the end of the summer that all of our police, our district police will have that as well. And I bring that up because of the, the concerns brought up by Ms. Fort and Ms. Murphy and others about making sure that the law enforcement officers that are in our classroom understand the unique needs and behaviors of our ESE students and don't misinterpret behavior as in intentional defiance or contradiction of law enforcement when it may just be their innate way of communicating. So I think that's extremely important. I think as we move through, as I said, as we move through this summer, if there's a deliberate effort by, by our police chief to work with the police chiefs and the sheriff to establish clear guidelines that are consistent with the state mandates, but also build in good practices and an assurance, as you point out, that they're picking the right people to be in our schools. Ideally, all people would be the right Ideally, all people would be the right people, but everybody does not share the same belief systems of equality, and I think that's extremely important. I want every single child to come in contact with nothing but adults who embrace every individual child equally and see the same opportunity, because if we do that, we really can break down these walls. And like I keep saying, in a single generation, we're the eighth largest district in the nation. We have such incredible opportunity. It's really exciting to think of what we can do, but it's also, as you all know, it's also huge. It's a lot of people. And so I also hope, Dr. Jenkins, over the summer, you've done so much to try to equalize the playing field academically, that we can talk about how do we instill that culture that embraces the values that we, as a board, have adopted. So, and I think that's going to involve every single board member being the mouth and embodying those in our schools and talking about why those values are so critical to our children today and our future tomorrow. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wanted to thank Dr. Jenkins for her beautiful words this evening. That was nice. Thank you. Just to echo what Member Lopez and Madam Chair said about the SROs, the ESE and the CIT training, it's my understanding that it's just on how to restrain children, not really to identify behaviors or ESE disabilities. Do we, do we offer any additional training other than the CIT for our SROs in regards to ESE students?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and step in. It's my understanding that we do have some training specifically geared towards ESE students, and there are unique exceptionalities, especially in light of situations that have happened. I would have to defer to staff on what exactly that training is, but we can get that to you.
And perhaps before the school year starts, there's an opportunity for a presentation to the board on this, and I think that would not only be for the benefit of the board, but the benefit of our community at large. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do know that when the law passed up in Tallahassee that required us to either have an SRO, a safety officer, or someone on our campus that would carry a gun, there was diversity training. So I know that every, every SRO, every person on campus has to go through diversity training. So within that presentation, if maybe we could get a rundown of what that diversity training looks like and how in-depth it is for our school resource officers, that might be helpful. But I do want to reiterate what the Chair said earlier, that we are mandated by law to have SROs on our campus. Our choices really are to have cops who are trained to handle a weapon and to handle those type of situations that would entail our children, or have a safety officer, or have a guardian who is trained. So, you know, given the options that we have, we've got to look at the safety of our children. But we were concerned, we were concerned when the bill passed about our marginalized children being further victimized with this. And I would imagine that we would have some type of stats by now, right? We've had SROs on our campus for a long time. We would, we would be able to look at trends to see if there's been any kind of uptick for our students being arrested on campus or, or any of that. Would we, we should have access to that information?
I think we report that information to the state regarding arrests on campus.
Ms. Enville, if you can pull the mic a little closer, because I'm sure the public can't hear you.
So we do have to report all that information to the state, how many arrests there are on campus, and I think staff can pull that for you.
And one more point, Madam Chair.
Yes, Member Gallo.
I know that we're looking at revising or creating a Baker Act policy, and we'll be revisiting it, I think, this fall. And I know in looking at Baker Acts, we're looking at training and CIT, some of the provisions in law was requiring CIT training for all SROs. So I know that the state is also looking at more provisions to make sure that whoever we have on our campus is there for the safety and the well-being of our children. So maybe we need to review that as part of the Baker Act, because especially with our ESE children and other children, it's always the SRO that Baker Acts our children, and to make sure that they are qualified to do so with that CIT training and diversity training and ESE training would be something we might need to look at. So thank you.
Excellent points, excellent points. Let's reckon, let me recognize Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You guys keep forgetting we are not, we are out here in la-la land. That's what it feels like. Nobody checks. We really have to work on that. We're in an official board meeting, and I was in the middle of hearing Castor Dental trying to rephrase her motion. I am not going to be sitting online and not be able to have a voice vote or a comment. I know that Dr. Jenkins was supposed to be taking care of me, but you all kept her so busy, she forgot about me. But Scott Howard did check on me, thank God. So we're going to have to get a better system for the school board members that are not going to run down and be in that board meeting when we're at the 50% or whatever percent, and there's a virus still out there, which is very, very dangerous. And I don't care what the governor says about Phase Two. I know that we can do, and we had just pretty much mastered the WebEx with all of us being where we need to be. So I don't know what the main deal is for wanting to have all of us there in the boardroom, because once a person disconnects, and they keep disconnecting and leaving the line, it automatically triggers over and disconnect those of us that are sitting with the phone just sitting there. So that, that system really needs to be checked. And if it is, I mean, when we have motions on the floor and we need to comment on them or vote on them, I think somebody needs to be there checking on us. So we don't even have a staff member checking to see when we leave the line and what happened and who disconnected us or whatever. It's not our home phone, it's the connection of the WebEx and probably the Wi-Fi or whatever. So Madam Chair, I do hope that you get with the superintendent and you all work that out, because I would like to find out what recommendations you all came with. I did hear Mr. Hazel's recommendation, and I did hear Wendy Dormel's recommendation, and I heard Board Member Castor Dental rephrasing, but I never did get what she rephrased. But I did hear the superintendent recommending approval with the provision of the state guidelines. And basically, you know, that's what I'm in for. I was on the board when we made those calendars, because that's the way we set them up. And we set them up ahead of time, but however, no one knew that this was going to happen. So if you could read to me whatever recommendation you all came up with, I will cast my voice vote.
Absolutely. Dr. Jenkins, can, can you recite to the best of your ability the motion? And then Ms. Enville, I'm going to ask for your help on whether or not we need to rescind the vote and recast it, or can we just have?
No, no.
Dr. Gordon, I just want to make sure Ms. Enville's in agreement so that we can include your vote. Ms. Enville, can we just include her vote now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so Dr. Jenkins, so that Dr. Gordon knows what the vote was on.
No, Madam Chair, what I was saying no for is you don't have to rescind, because you have everybody's vote. So there's no rescension needed. I just want to get my voice vote on the record once I hear what Member Castor Dental proposed.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Dr. Jenkins to read it as opposed to Dr. Castor Dental, because Dr. Jenkins was the one who originally read the language. Go ahead, Dr. Jenkins.
I'm not asking anybody. It should be the board secretary, which is Dr. Jenkins.
That's who's going to read it. We're on the same page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gordon, it was moved by Member Castor Dental that the date of July 31, 2020 be approved as a pre-planning, additional pre-planning day for teachers, and that we provide flexibility of coming in or taking, making it a virtual, virtual day, or opting out not to work and instead not being paid for that day pursuant to collective bargaining. It was seconded by Member Cobert.
Okay. And my comments to that, I did hear, I wasn't sure, I know we had the 31st on the original. So, and I did hear Wendy, but I wasn't very sure, are they willing to forego that pay on that day by using it as virtual? This is the understanding that I needed before I can cast my voice vote.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gordon, so there are a couple of different issues. Thank you for helping us to clarify that. First of all, they might be able to determine they don't want to come in on that day and just forego pay for that sixth day of pre-planning. Second of all, we may have discussions with the union on that matter, or we may have discussions around making it a virtual day where they do their pre-planning on that Friday at home. Those two options will be discussed at the bargaining table.
Okay. So with the wording that is there, which doesn't sound like the wording, but, I mean, you're saying that, I'm just trying to get an understanding, it's either R, so it's a flexibility, they're asking for it to be flexible, that they could do one thing or the other?
Correct.
Because the way it is stated in the original, that, that was going to be the day, which is a bad day anyhow, I'm being honest. But, I mean, it's an alternate, they can choose to do one or the other thing, that's what I was hearing.
That's correct.
For Member Castor. With that in mind, then, let the Chair know that I am in favor of the recommendation and hopefully approving it with the provisions of the state guidelines, because all of that may change, and we may need to have to read or dress it later on as we get closer to the August 10th date.
All right. Thank you. So the record will reflect that you voted in the affirmative, and we were all on the same page, that we may need to revisit this.
Right. And Madam Chair, my next statement, I did, I switched over to the television, not the television, and I switched over to YouTube, and Dr. Jenkins was giving a report, and I saw her mention Board Member Melissa Byrd, but I don't know what the report was, because I was trying to get the telephone back connected. And then I went over to YouTube, but YouTube is either ahead of you guys, some kind of way, or behind you. So I don't know what she was saying, so I missed all of that.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Dr. Gordon, that was an announcement that Melissa Byrd joined you and Member Cobert as a certified board member. She has completed her requirements, got her official notification, and we were congratulating her for joining you and Member Cobert as a certified board member. And everyone applauded. And everyone applauded.
Oh, my, you mean my recertification?
You are a certified, you are a certified board member. She's joining you, and Linda, she has just now earned her board certification.
Oh, but we always have to keep recertifying, so mine must have been recertification, and Linda's must have been recertification, so I say congratulations to Board Member Byrd.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
You can go, but God bless you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
All right, absolutely. Let's go now to our Vice Chair, Vice Chair Gould.
Thank you so much, Chair. I wanted to go back to the discussion about our SROs and our police force. As, as we know, you know, people are, have different temperaments and are suited for different jobs. And, you know, we're in a time of reflection and action and really have an opportunity to take inventory of what kind of community we want to have represented in our school system. And we also know that, that there are many SROs that have been wonderful partners at the, at the school base and in the community. Is there not only the training protocol, but almost a personality profile to best match people who are skilled in law enforcement, but really are innate leaders for youth and, and have that ability to outreach to youth in such a special way? So I don't know if that could be part of our profile. And also, one of our callers on the pre-agenda session talked about the budget, and the budget that we do have for SROs does not fully pay for all of our SROs, but is there a way to maybe reshape our OCPS police force and have more coverage of our schools? And could we perhaps take a look at that and reexamine that with the dollars that we do receive and through the partnerships even with our police forces as they go through some self-examination and probably some retooling as we move forward? It's really, you know, I think that we have to put every option on the table right now in order to ensure the next generation not only sees the hope of us living in an equitable society, but the actions that are firm and forward-thinking and full of reflection and assessment with every step that we take with everybody that we put on our campus. And that, that same kind of, I'm thinking of a Myers-Briggs kind of a personality, not, you know, do you like kids or don't like kids? But there's, we're all just, we're all built different ways, and we all have different skills and gifts given to us. And some are much better with young people and children than others, and some really understand also the factors that our children are dealing with, which are not always so apparent when you're just at school and in the middle of a situation. You could be traumatized, they could have health issues, there's, there's just a lot of factors, never mind just normal development and, and that process. So I would just ask us to look at all areas that we possibly can as we move forward into the new school year with, with our police force and, and that same kind of training with anybody that comes in and can influence our children, whether it's coaches, our teachers get a lot of professional training and understand it, but it should be possible.
Vice Chair Gould, did you finish your comment?
I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. It's a little, your voice is a little soft, so it's a little hard to tell. Dr. Gordon, or Dr. Jenkins, can you respond?
Yes. I appreciate Member Gould's comments as well. It occurred to me, I probably should say this so anyone listening would be aware of it as well, we depend on financial partnerships with municipalities to help cover the cost of those SROs. We do not pay the full cost of a full-time police officer. Our contribution is probably close to the 50% range for the actual cost of those officers. So that's an important note. When Member Gould mentioned whether or not we might be able to shore up our forces, we only are purchasing about 50% of the cost of those covered. But I do think the point is well-taken to review the training that's required that our SROs go through and how we might shore that up as well. It just occurred to me, and so I got the Chair to let me intervene, wanted folks to understand, we do not pay the full cost of those SRO officers. We depend on municipalities to cover about half of the cost of each of those officers.
Vice Chair Gould, anything further? All right, let's hear from.
Not on this subject. I have a couple of other things that we give into general comment.
All right, Member Cobert. Okay. All right. Dr. Jenkins, I think that concluded your comments. Let's go to Vice, to our General Counsel, Ms. Enville. I have somebody else in queue. I'm sorry, Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to lend my voice to the concerns amid the Black Lives Matter protests, not, not so much around the SROs and their training, but in our daily work as teachers and staff, OCPS has been working with teachers in our schools with implicit bias training and cultural awareness training. And I really hope that those trainings withstand any cut that might be coming in the, you know, in the coming months, and possibly, if, if we can, it might be important to expand those trainings to reach even more. those trainings to reach even more of our staff numbers. I think this is a prime opportune time to look within and examine the disparities that our students experience and our employees as well. And I think as a district, we do have a role to play in participating in these conversations, and may need to invite more participants and their voices. I want to recommend some ideas that I've had experience with that may be helpful in bringing those discussions forth. And I know some of the board members may already be aware of the great work that Valencia's Peace and Justice Institute does. They also have an academy for teachers, and they do a lot of training over the summer. And they offer a great, it's a great resource, and they host a lot of community conversations that are very important. Another idea that I think can help further this cause is book clubs. I know there was a Lake Silver elementary teacher, Mary Ann Hutchison, who put together a book discussion at her school around this wonderful book called Dream Keepers by Gloria Ladsen-Billings. It's about teaching, the teaching of African-American children, and it's research-based, but it's a very easy read, and I think teachers and parents will all get a lot out of that as well. A third idea is something that we've worked with in the Innovation Schools Department with Area Superintendent John Wright, and that is at Audubon Park, we have what's called an Equity Council. And it was started by a parent, but it involves staff members, PTA members, teachers, administrators, and they look at practices at the school level and really help target on the ground floor things that don't appear equitable. And there are some, there are some difficult discussions that happen, but it's, I think, an important tool, and it might be worth replicating. And then finally, a resource that I've used when I was teaching, and that I continue to read about, is what the Southern Poverty Law Center puts forth. And they have a wonderful resource and extensive curriculum called Teaching Tolerance. And it's free, and it's available to teachers across all grade levels. And I'm happy to discuss any of those ideas in greater depth, and doing what I can to bring together those communities inside and outside of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Member Castor Dental, the, I think you called an Equality, was it Equality Council?
Equity Council.
Equity Council? Was that some, was that something here in Orange County Public Schools?
Yes, it's at Audubon Park.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. All great suggestions to take into consideration as we move forward, to make sure that the culture that we, that we want to see as board members is in fact taking place in all of our classrooms. I think next up is Member Cobert. We are, I'm sorry, we still haven't gotten discussion. Let's go to General Counsel.
If I may, I just wanted to provide you some figures, since it's a, I don't have an actual report, but I've been, I have some friends that have provided me with some information. Just to put things into perspective, the average cost of an officer is roughly $150,000, and that includes the insurance and the FRS retirement and the vehicles, ancillary equipment, and all that other stuff. Under our SRO agreement, this year we're paying $49,000 per officer, and next year we're going up to $50,000 per officer. So just some figures to consider.
Compared to our average cost of 150?
The average cost is 150, roughly, just as a general.
That includes equipment?
And base salary, and insurance, and overtime, and fuel, and everything like that.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify that for anybody who might be watching and for a minute thinks that we're paying $150,000 in salary. That is not the case, that's the all-in.
That's what the base salary of roughly $50,000.
Okay. Okay. Any other, anything else in terms of a report, then, but let's move to school board comments. And now, Ms. Cobert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Before I share the good news, I just want to take a moment to tell you how proud I am of all the board members who sit up here and our superintendent, the beautiful quotes made by Dr. Jenkins, I think they resonate with all of us, the concern, the deep concern for our students and the equity that they so deserve. And the comment by Dr. Jenkins, that what can we do is to raise a generation of human beings who love each other, who are equal, who are kind. And that really resonated with me, and makes me very proud to sit up here and serve on this board, and to our fellow Americans out there in our community and beyond, who are suffering, who are in pain, and who have been in pain for a very long time, just know that we not only stand behind you, but we stand with you. That was important for me to say tonight. And now for the very good news. Okay, a few years, a few weeks ago, I shared with you all that Walker Middle School was named the Odyssey of the Mind Regional Champs, and they was the only OCPS middle school who had a win in the gold category. Well, I have just been informed that Walker Middle School placed seventh in the world, in the World Odyssey of the Mind. Seventh in the world! They had to compete virtually, but these students rose to the occasion. And I want to mention that Walker Middle School was one of the few schools in the state of Florida that was chosen, I believe it was last year, for NASA's Mars bus to go to that school. And the idea behind the Mars bus traveling to these schools was the astronauts who will be traveling to Mars in the future are most likely sitting in our middle schools today. And that was to inspire them. And so I would say that we are inspiring tomorrow's scientists, and I'm so proud of Walker Middle School, and cannot wait until we can have them in here in person and congratulate them. So, thank you for my indulgence.
Absolutely. Other board members that have comments this evening? Member, Vice Chair Gould, you're recognized?
Yes, thank you, and that's a perfect segue, actually, because I was going to acknowledge about Walker Middle School and what Member Cobert shared a few weeks ago. And we had a team from Thornbrook Elementary who actually won the top prize in the International Creative Problem Solving Competition this past May for Odyssey of the Mind. There were 843 teams that completed 20 categories. Participants included US, Canada, Mexico, Germany, Switzerland, Poland, Russia, South Korea, and many others. Thornbrook came in first place among 61 teams in the elementary division of the technical problem titled Net Working, not one word, two words, Net Working. The problem included creating a device with three five-foot-long segments to transport messages within human intervention. The team's solution combined scientific and artistic elements in a humorous skit about evil Pluto's plan to take over the galaxy since he had been kicked out of the planet club. The three segments were a helium-powered gondola, a boat floating along a true Milky Way, and a home robot rover with an ultrasonic cutoff, which they started working on last September. Thornbrook also earned the prestigious Renatare Huska Award. You'd think, since I've been to Italy, I should be able to say that. Renatare Huska Award, given to only 15 teams out of the 843 participating. This award recognizes exceptional creativity and risk-taking solutions. The team was one of 101 Florida teams that received the coveted prize. The team is comprised of two second graders, Amelia Sanchez and six fifth graders, I'm sorry, of one second grader, Amelia Sanchez, and fifth graders Emerson Elliott, Maxwell O'Connor, Brecken Russo, Lucia Sanchez, Joshua Sharer, and Natasha Stewart. Congratulations to Thornbrook, the teachers, and of course, Principal Daniels, who continues to blend art, math, and science so beautifully. What a great story to tell. And then I had one other wonderful voicemail today from Mayor John Reese of Winter Garden, who just wanted to share how great our West Orange graduation, virtual graduation was, and that he has heard nothing but glowing responses from the community. That is all I have to share this evening, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, any other comments from board members? All right, then. There you are, Angie. Member Gallo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I have a question in regards to the working group that we formed. Can you just give us an idea of what's going to happen with it? Like, are the ideas going to be shared with the board, and will the ideas be shared in an open format, so that we can have comment from the public and from parents?
Yes, so all they are tasked with doing is summarizing all of the ideas, and so there will be a document, in my mind, that summarizes all of those ideas, and we'll certainly be happy to share it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? All right, then, Dr. Jenkins, any further business to come before the board? This meeting is now adjourned.